It's six o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order if you will please rise for the pledge and remain standing for the invocation. Reverend Turner?
Madam Mayor and City Council and citizens of Allen Park, let's bow our heads and talk to God. Almighty God, we come to you this evening and as transcendent as you are, you are still very personal and involved in our lives. And so, we ask your blessings upon our lives, our families, the city of Allen Park, this incredible government, Madam Mayor, and this City Council. Direct them as they lead us. Amen. You may be seated.
Thank you.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilman Lloyd?
Here.
Councilman Schlag?
Present.
Councilman Barr is asked to be excused. Councilman Marcos?
Here.
Councilman Valerius?
Here.
Pro Tem Nick?
Here.
Treasurer Astiner?
Here.
And Mayor Gail McLeod?
Here.
We have a quorum, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. If I may have a motion to approve the agenda for this evening?
Motion.
Motion by the dynamic duo on my left, Nancy Nick and Matt Valerius. Any changes or corrections?
Through the chair, I'd like to make a change, uh, changes to Resolution Five. Changes we want to make are as follows.
Sure. I don't have any notes. Oh, the actual page. Gotcha.
Oh. All right, the first change we're gonna make, uh, in Clause One, we're gonna change it to where it says Mayor to City Administrator. Uh, in Clause Two, in the agreement, uh, where it says Mayor, we're gonna change that, uh, again to City Administrator. Clause Five, where it says, once again, Mayor, we're gonna change that to, uh, City Administrator with advice and consent of Mayor and Council.
I think, didn't we talk about just changing that to?
Did we just?
Oh, that is.
Rather, yeah, just City Administrator.
Changing Mayor to, to City Administrator.
All the places where it says Mayor is.
Yeah.
So then that would be eight as well.
And also Clause Eight, where it states Mayor, we're gonna change that to City Administrator. Where, uh, for Clause Nine, where it lists Mayor, uh, Gail McLeod, we're gonna change that to City Administrator, as well as then in the witness section. And that is it.
Thank you. Again. Okay, so the original, uh, Mr. Nick and Mr. Valerius, are you okay with those changes?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, any other changes?
Uh, no further changes, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of October the eighth?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. Any corrections?
Uh, Mayor?
Yes.
I believe on the last time we approved the minutes, I think we approved him, it was for the wrong date. I think we said it was a Wednesday instead of a Tuesday, uh, for, I guess it would have been for the meetings of October eighth, but they were rather.
I think what you're referring to is the agenda was mismarked.
Right, yeah, yeah, correct.
And that was it. The, I just accidentally marked a four then a two and it, it's an agenda and again, an agenda is just a guideline.
Very well. Okay.
Yeah, the minutes are.
The minutes are correct.
The minutes are correct.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Uh, we will now have a presentation from Melissa Lambert from the Allen Park High School Library.
Hello.
Hello.
Good evening. Um, I am Melissa Lambert, Allen Park High School's library media specialist. I'm here today just to present our One Book, One School, One Community, um, selection that was chosen for this school year. It's Premise Boys by author Nick Brooks. Um, it is a murder mystery. It is set in an urban prep high school and key themes include justice, identity, and resilience. All of our students at Allen Park High School have read this book and it has been extremely popular. Um, some of them have donated the book back to the school, and so we would now like to share copies of the book with the city, um, in hopes that you might join us in reading the book too. Um, the main mission of One Book, One School community is to foster a love of reading, strengthen our community ties through a shared literary experience. Some of our goals include igniting excitement around reading and a love of literature, enhancing comprehension and promoting critical thinking, building relationships across diverse groups, and bridging gaps between different generations and backgrounds. Um, so I have fifteen copies of the book tonight that I will share with the mayor and city council, and you can disperse among departments, maybe put a couple with Parks and Rock, a couple with Police and Fire, and, um, hopefully you all will join us in reading. I, I am so happy that there are so many students here today. That worked out my favor. Uh, I think many of them hopefully will say that they read the book or, yes, and enjoyed it, so. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You'll just leave those. Thank you very much. I know that, uh, Melissa left, uh, books for us last year also for the same program, so, thank you again. Now we will move on to our, um, organizational business, and this evening we will start out with a few proclamations. First one is for the Kiwanis eighty-fifth anniversary, which is on October the twenty-ninth. In honor of the Allen Park Kiwanis eighty-fifth anniversary, whereas Kiwanis International is one of the largest service organizations in the world with more than four hundred and thirty thousand members of all ages and abilities in more than eighty nations and geographic areas, and whereas the members of the Kiwanis Club of Allen Park are devoted to improving the world one child and one community at a time by seeking to give primacy to the human and spiritual rather than the material values of life, and whereas in addition to improving the lives of children in Allen Park and in communities around the world, Kiwanis Club members promote the development of community leaders, positive role models, intercultural understanding and cooperation, and opportunities for fellowship, personal growth, professional development, and community service. And whereas the first Kiwanis Club started its service in Detroit, Michigan, in nineteen fifteen, and the Kiwanis Club of Allen Park was formed in nineteen thirty-nine, and whereas the service provided by the Kiwanis Club of Allen Park will continue to have a positive impact on our community and citizens. Therefore, I, Mayor Gail McLeod, do hereby proclaim the twenty-ninth day of October, twenty twenty-four, as Kiwanis International Day, and hereby call upon all citizens of the city of Allen Park to render support to the members of this organization and to make themselves aware of Kiwanis International, whose members this day are providing meaningful service to our homes, schools, and community. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Allen Park, Michigan, to be affixed this twenty-second day of October, two thousand twenty-four. If you, uh, members would like to come up, I would be more than happy to give you proclamation. And who gets this? You can pass it around. You can all turn it over.
All right, well, thank you.
And for those of you, uh, who may be newer to the community, uh, very famous park is sponsored by the Kiwanis, and it's the Barney Park on Park Avenue, and I'm sure we've all had our kids there and our grandkids, and, um, it's just a beautiful, beautiful park. So, thank you all very much for what you've done.
Thank you.
Uh, really, really appreciate it. Very much. Thank you. Our next proclamation is for the National Native American Heritage Month. Whereas the history and culture of our great nation have been significant, significantly influenced by Native Americans and indigenous peoples, and whereas the contributions of Native Americans have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of Americans today, and whereas their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States, and whereas Native American Awareness Week began in nineteen seventy-six, and recognition was expended by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August nineteen ninety, designating the month of November as National Native American Heritage Month, and whereas in honor of National Native American Heritage Month, community celebrations as well as numerous cultural, artistic, educational, and historical activities have been planned. Now therefore, I, Gail McLeod, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the city of Allen Park, Michigan, do hereby proclaim November twenty twenty-four as National Native American Heritage Month in the city of Allen Park, and urge all citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Allen Park, Michigan, to be affixed this twenty-second day of October, two thousand twenty-four. Now we come to a very special one. Very pleased to have members, I believe, this evening from the Red Ribbon Week. Uh, last year, this one kinda snuck up on us. Um, this year, we had communications in advance, and oddly enough, I was at a SUDS meeting last Thursday, and they had a little packet, and they were handing out red ribbons, so I thought, how, how fitting that you should be here this evening. Recognizing and in honor of Red Ribbon Week, whereas alcohol and other drug abuse in this nation has reached epidemic stages, and whereas it is imperative that visible unified prevention education efforts by community members be launched to eliminate the demand for drugs, and whereas the National Family Partnership is sponsoring the National Red Ribbon Campaign, offering citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyles, no use of illegal drugs, no illegal use of legal drugs, and whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign will be celebrated in every community in America during Red Ribbon Week, October twenty-third through the thirty-first, and whereas business, government, parents, law enforcement, media, medical, religious institutions, schools, senior citizens, service organizations, and youth will demonstrate their commitment to healthy, drug-free lifestyles by wearing and displaying red ribbons during this week-long campaign, and whereas the city of Allen Park further commits its resources to ensure the success of the Red Ribbon Campaign, now therefore be it resolved that the city of Allen Park does hereby proclaim October twenty-three through thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, as Red Ribbon Week, and encourages its citizens to participate in drug prevention education activities, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free state. In witness whereof, I do hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Allen Park, Michigan, be affixed this twenty-second day of October, two thousand twenty-four. If you'll come up, I will give you your proclamation.
Thank you, thank you. You're gonna face the mayor, though.
There we go.
I'm gonna switch places here. There we go. Um, you're gonna give that to our call, I think.
Okay.
Standing right here. Thank you.
Thank you for your involvement.
Thank you.
I have time a lot of SUDS meetings, and I've got some of the students to come there. And as a parent, um, it's sometimes very difficult to hear what I hear from the representatives from SUDS, so, thank you for stepping up and doing this. Um, you should be very proud of yourselves, and I'm sure you're gonna help others, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, thank you. I appreciate this. Um, we're happy to be here and to be recognized. The students behind me and other members at large, um, I have to really quickly, the students behind me, um, make up our executive board for the organization. Um, we are growing our organization. It's something that, uh, took a little bit of a hiatus during the pandemic, but we're building it back up again. Um, members here behind me, like I said, represent the executive, uh, board for SAD, and we are actively working on a door decorating campaign for this month with messages, um, for our community about living a healthy lifestyle. Um, so, we really appreciate this recognition, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. City Treasurer?
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you. Um, just a reminder to our citizens that we're currently working on winter taxes, so, that's great news, right? They'll be mailed out at the end of November and will arrive to you by December third. Uh, those taxes, along with any summer tax bills not paid, will be due February fifteenth, uh, February twenty-eighth at the latest. Uh, delinquent summer taxes have a penalty assessed on the first of each month, and as of March first, all delinquent taxes, summer and winter, are sent to Wayne County Treasurer's Office for collection. Uh, it may not be paid here at the city after that point, so, uh, it's best to get it in. Just remember Valentine's Day. That's the best day to get those taxes in. Um, I also wanted to talk tonight about another topic. Uh, recently I received a FOIA request for money spent on trainings that I've attended and other expenses, uh, which I fully complied with, uh, and thought for full transparency, I would speak about this tonight. Uh, while I obviously don't ever hide any of my trainings, in fact, I speak quite openly about them at our meetings, and I'm eager to share the information gained. That's the whole purpose, but I'd like to address tonight why continued training from municipal treasurers is so critical, and why it's important, uh, for us treasurers to be involved in professional organizations like the Michigan Municipal Treasure Association, MMTA for short, and the National Organization, uh, of Public Treasurers of the United States and Canada, the APT U.S. and C. for short. Again, these are trainings and certifications, uh, which give not only necessary knowledge, uh, but credibility to the role. These trainings go a long way, um, for not only public trust and confidence, uh, in the person and the process, but also it's important for audit purposes, which we've recently discovered. So, much like any job, in order to perform at your highest level, you must receive training, especially in specialized fields such as finance. A lot, a lot of these expenditures happen mostly within the first year, and then there's a continuation, uh, to be recertified. Um, as your treasurer, my primary role is to safeguard your money, taxpayer dollars, uh, oversee public funds, and ensure that our city's financial operations run smoothly. This role is not static, however. Financial regulations, technology, and best practices in public finance are constantly changing, constantly evolving. Uh, to keep up with these changes and ensure that we are making the best decisions for our community, continued education and training is essential. In fact, due to this ever-changing environment with the MMTA, members must re-certify every four years. Uh, membership in organizations like MMTA and the APT U.S. and C. allow me to stay informed and connected with a network of treasurers and finance directors. Uh, these organizations, as mentioned, provide valuable training, um, certifications, and resources that help me do my job as your treasurer, but more importantly, they offer opportunities to collaborate, uh, and share knowledge with other treasurer, treasurers who face the same challenges, whether they're from across the county, the state, or even across the country. Uh, these connections have become so important these past few months while, uh, faced with the losing of our finance director. Um, had I not been able to reach out to mentors and connections I've made to carry on her day-to-day work, uh, we could have made some critical mistakes. Uh, thankfully, I was able to lean on these connections, um, made and, and, and work internally with payroll manager Jackie Baxter, for instance. Uh, Jackie, uh, just to ensure that these essential items weren't missed. By the way, it should be noted that Jackie has and continues to perform above and beyond taking on additional responsibility and still performing her demanding role. Uh, she should be commended by all of you. Um, as mentioned in the last meeting, next month I'll be certified, uh, public funds investment manager, which is so critical to the oversight, uh, funds of the city of Allen Park, again, especially while operating without a finance director. In fact, one of my roles as your treasurer per the charter is to make investments with any surplus funds belonging to our city, um, or under the control of our city. Uh, now I understand there's a cost associated with these trainings, uh, and memberships, and some might ask, uh, if it's worth it to the taxpayer. Um, the answer is, I think I've demonstrated and pointed out, is absolutely yes. Uh, by investing in education, we ensure that our city's finances are managed as efficiently as possible. A well-trained treasurer is able to minimize risks, avoid costly mistakes, and even find savings that benefit the entire community. Um, I have some examples of that that I could share at another time. Um, the cost of the, uh, continued training pays for itself many times over by the enhancing, uh, our ability to manage public funds responsibly. Uh, in the end, supporting the ongoing education of treasurers like myself is not just an investment in me, but it's an investment in the financial future of Allen Park. It ensures that we could continue to manage our city's finances with transparency, accountability, and the highest level of professionalism. Thank you guys so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Tim. Um, there's no city administrators operational report, but I have put together something very brief, uh, kind of a city update, uh, from the fire department. Fifty-three thousand dollars of the fifty-four thousand dollars in repairs to the damaged ambulance were covered by the MML insurance, and the department deductible amount was a thousand dollars. Parks and Recreation had their first hockey tournament of the season, which began this past weekend, and from the looks of the parking lots in the area, it was a success. Thirty-five games have been scheduled for ages ten through thirteen. From DPS, the Reek Bridge construction was extended to, for two more weeks to ensure proper curing of concrete. Um, the bridge should be done by the second week in November. Roadwork at Wick and Herrick is three-quarters completed. Trunk or Treat will take place this Friday, October the twenty-sixth, from five PM to seven thirty PM. In conjunction with the last farmer's market, uh, Park Avenue will be closed between Harrison and Garfield. That's two blocks, and, um, I think they will probably, if the turnout is anything like last year, they'll probably be expanding that again next year. Uh, the Lighted Christmas Parade on Park Avenue will be held on Friday, November the twenty-second, starting at six thirty PM. The parade will begin at the Historical Museum and, and at the Community Center. And that's it for city updates. Now we will move on to the public comments section of the tonight's meeting. Uh, you have, um, all we ask is that you provide your name and the street on which you live. Please do not provide a full address, and limit, uh, your comments to, um, being civil, and you have four minutes. Thank you.
My name is Greg Bader. Uh, I used to live on Champagne. I live in, uh, Woodhaven right now. I'm, uh, past president of the Allen Park Kiwanis Club. Uh, thank you all for the very, uh, nice proclamation you gave us. We look forward to seeing all of you at the Rec Center next Tuesday from six to eight. What I wanted to bring to your attention, though, was a challenge that our club is having right now. Like many other service clubs, uh, it's tough getting members. Um, when I joined Kiwanis back in nineteen seventy-six, by the way, my background, I grew up here, went to school here, ran for city council. I only came in ten out of fourteen in the general election, so I never got to sit behind the chair like you did, but it was, uh, it was a love of mine. I, I went from there. Mayor Latta appointed me to the planning commission. I then ran for, uh, the school board and was elected there. Back in those days, when I was first, uh, elected president, uh, which was nineteen eighty-three, we had eighty-eight members of the Allen Park Kiwanis Club. Almost every member of city council, as well as the mayor, were in our club. In fact, there was a saying back in those days that, uh, Allen Park Kiwanis runs the city, but Rotary owns it. So, uh, back, back then Frank Latta was the mayor, uh, Don Pretty was mayor pro tem, Harold Duda, who the park was named after, was a member of the club. Tom Fiese, his wife, Marion, was the first, uh, woman elected to city council in Allen Park. So, uh, it, it's just more and more difficult for us to get anything done these days. Uh, we are below charter strength, which, as you heard the mayor say, goes back to nineteen thirty-nine. That means we have fourteen members. Uh, I live in Woodhaven. Behind me, Dave Goodwin, who owns a business in town, he lives on Groseale. Uh, Don Yocle is here somewhere in the back. Uh, he lives in Westland. Mark Brannon, who is here from our club, lives in Riverview. We s, we're, we're the major part of Allen Park Kiwanis, and we don't even live here. So, but it does speak to the love that we have for this city and continue to have. So, my ask tonight is brief. Uh, I would ask that each of you, uh, become members of our club. Um, there is a downside to this. At some point, if we don't, and we've made the same appeal to the Board of Education, uh, but at some point, if, if, uh, if we continue to see this downward spiral in membership, uh, we will have our charter pulled. Uh, I, in closing, I would just say to you, it's not like we have just sit back and said, "Let people come to us." We have done things. Dave Goodwin and I went up on the hill. We went to every single business up there. We had three people come to our meetings as a result of that, and only one of those joined our club. I can't speak to why it's like that now. It, all the service clubs are that way, but, uh, it would mean a lot. I would also tell you too, and my final remark, is that many service clubs have trouble going day-to-day just to raise money so that they can stay in effect. Uh, I just looked at our investments before I came here tonight. We have just shy of seven hundred thousand dollars, and it was, it was a result of a, uh, inheritance from a former member. So, we have money, we just don't have people.
Well, if you, um, I forgot to hit the timer, so you're timing your time as well.
Which is good for me.
Which is good for you. But if you have, uh, something that you could email to us, then we will try and get, uh, some publicity out for you also.
Well, certainly, yeah. We figure by, you know, by you speaking on our behalf too, certainly can help. Thank you.
What are the meeting times again?
Uh, we meet at the Allen Park High School in the Media Center.
I'm sorry, when?
Uh, every Tuesday at six o'clock.
Tuesday, six. Thank you. Oh, that's. Okay, but yeah, that's.
If we have to, we'll adjust that. By the way, Mike used to be a member of our club.
Yes, Mark, Dave, wow. Haven't seen you guys in a while. Good to see you.
Hello, Mark Bailey. Residence is on Philomen, but I reside on Park Avenue, and I'm in front of you again, and I'm a member of the Allen Park Elks, and we're in the same predicament that your club is in. Membership is down, but I'm in, in char, I've been in charge of the Allen Park Elks pumpkin patch for thirty-six years now, and I think all of you probably have gotten your flyers for this year. At the moment, our inside party for the special needs adults that are now senior citizens is at capacity, has been at capacity for thirty-six years, so we will have a robust party for the special needs on Halloween night, and I do need students, and you've helped in the past, and citizens have helped in the past, outside and inside, and we have a few pumpkins out there. I've already talked to a few of you. I've already talked to a few of you about different things. We're beginning more pumpkins. The street unfortunately won't be as decorative as it has been in the past thirty years due to the DDA and DTE retrofitting of Park Avenue. You can go down there at night and get a suntan if you want, and I invite you to come down for the thirty-sixth annual Allen Park Pumpkin Patch. You'll enjoy the show. And now, tonight, I'm going to take care of my mother, who is ninety-two and has been residing in the city and living with us for the last two years. Thank you very much.
Hello, Wayne Smith, Philomene. Regarding Resolution Five for Mark Kibbe's professional services, I urge the council to approve it, and that includes Nancy Nick, Gerald Barr was here, and of course, Mr. Schleck. The approval of that Resolution Number Five should be a no-brainer for all of you. We need Mark Kibbe to handle CDBG efforts and other critically important city functions. Don't make the same mistake with Mark Kibbe as you did when you turned down the services of Amanda Wertz for the part-time help as finance director. I believe it was Mr. Barr, Mr. Schleck, and Nancy Nick who voted no on the proposal for Amanda's services, yet you approved the proposal to bring on an outsider to do the job at the same pay rate. Who does that? That makes no sense at all. My guess is that Amanda quit, didn't tell you. You got your feelings hurt, so instead of putting your hurt feelings aside and doing what's right for the city, you voted to bring on an outsider. Your decision to turn down Amanda's services was purely personal. If the new city council members are struggling to understand their role and their responsibilities, I would suggest you pick an experienced city council member to mentor with. We don't want to lose any more of our valuable city workers due to your lack of experience, micromanaging, and poor decision-making. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Augustin Quant. I'm here for a couple reasons, a couple reasons I'm going to ask you some questions. The last meeting I turned around, I gave you every one of these, every one of you received a procedure as to how to follow a meeting, including Joe Coviere and everyone else. They're given to you for a purpose, and the purpose was to make sure these meetings are followed in the correct way and open to us. Hopefully, you all read it. If you haven't, that's okay. It took me about twenty minutes to read it. So, I'm going to add a couple of things right now about it. Nothing against Mark Kibbe, nothing against anybody that we hire. Did we interview Mark Kibbe for this position? You don't have to answer because you're not going to answer me anyways. Okay? The reason I'm asking this says this. However, all interviews by a public body for employment or appointment to a public office shall, I repeat, shall, be held in an open meeting. The next thing I'm going to ask is, it says, "No person shall have the right to speak more than once on any particular subject until all persons wishing to be heard on that subject has had that opportunity." That means that if everyone has the opportunity, someone can come back up here again and talk. So, I'm going to ask you a couple of questions. Can you please, when you're going through resolutions, please go ahead and try to explain to us, the citizens, of what the heck's happening? You guys had this little special meeting before? Great. But you know what? It sure looked to me like you needed to go over that before that meeting, to have a little council, get together with your little committees and say, "Hey, this is what we need." It was nice to have it in an open forum. Okay? I go along with that. Okay? But every one of you been elected, and you have a duty. You all have your own opinion. You have your opinion, and I honor that opinion. I honestly do as a citizen. I don't come up here just to shoot garbage at you. I come up here to inform the citizens that are behind me, that are at home, that don't have the opportunity to come up here and talk to you. I'm not asking you anything special. I'm only going to ask you to please follow the Open Meetings Act. You all are on notice now, every one of you. Follow it, please. That's not a threat either. Don't take it as a threat. You have a duty to do it. Like the gentleman who just came up here, some of you are new at this. Wow. And you're learning. Thank you for taking up and putting your time in front of us because you're more, you can do more than this, this. It's like all us commissioners out here that work for nothing, and a lot of us get stabbed in the back. So, I'm going to just tell you right now, thank you very much for giving my time and allowing me the extra time since, I don't know if you hit your timer or not, okay? But we are the citizens. You were elected by us. If you vote no, you vote no. I'm not going to come up here and scream bloody murder. You have a reason for it. You really and truly do, you know? So, have a great day. Thank you very much. Please vote.
My name is Laura Karate. I live on Jonas Avenue. I have not been able to make many of the meetings in person, but I do watch regularly from home. And I've noticed in the past few months that the meetings have become pretty powerfully contentious, and disagreements in voting seem to be resulting in personal attacks at each other, and as a resident, it's frustrating to watch. At the last council meeting, Mayor McLeod read the last operational report that was written by Mark Kibbe. In that report, he detailed the training of one of our police officers, the length, et cetera, and then proceeded to thank him for his commitment to improve the services for the citizens of Allen Park. And he proceeded to give the rest of his report, and then the very last thing he said to the residents of Allen Park on record was, "For transparency, the MML convention Mayor Pro Tem Nick, Councilman Barr, and Councilman Schleck attended on Mackinac Island from nine eleven to nine thirteen cost the taxpayers of Allen Park six thousand forty dollars and ninety-eight cents before expenses." Those were his parting words to Allen Park. And it was incredibly obvious and frankly, a petty parting shot, and he fully intended to create more hostility as his very last act for the city and for what? Why? What got accomplished by that? And I'd be remiss if I didn't point out how the timing landed on the very same meeting where our treasurer detailed in both his report and his comments on all the training he's had recently, and as he stated earlier, how fundamental that training is and how important that training is and how the municipal league's forming alliances with each other and the members, which is exactly what six thousand and forty dollars and ninety-eight cents went to, even though it was intended to be weaponized, and it was intended to create hostility and division. And the residents are tired of that, all of them. I talked to a lot of people. I'm a vendor at the farmer's market. I talked to a lot of people. We're so tired of it. And I just, weaponizing training. You know, the city council in Taylor votes on every single training any member takes in their city. So, that it doesn't need to be that way. Maybe it does for them, but it doesn't need to be for us, but it also doesn't need to be weaponized against our members for bettering themselves. And especially when it's your last words, I just, I don't know. We have to do better because I realize that politics is not for thin-skinned individuals. I know this. But the personal animosity needs to be kept behind closed doors because when we bring that out, it discourages people from participating in democracy, and it's frustrating. But on a separate, happier note, I would like to thank everybody from the city who has attended our farmer's market this season. It was nice to regularly see elected officials participating and engaging with our vendors. And as a vendor, I also want to thank Kim Steinman for the tremendous amount of work that she did this year and put into the market to improve it. She did an incredible job each week organizing and communicating with us, and she constantly sought feedback from us as vendors on ways that she could improve, and she made tweaks when she needed to make tweaks. And it's been a difficult year. The economy hasn't been great, so our volume is down, but the improvements are still noticeable, and she really has done a wonderful job, and it was a welcome change that we needed. And the last thing that I would like to mention is that the Historical Museum will be participating in trick-or-treating this year. We will have candy, and we will have free balloons from our own balloon guy, Steve, and who most of you know from Duda Park and the farmer's market, and that is scheduled to begin about five o'clock. I know that the city's official time is five-thirty, but we had already made the flyer and put it out with five o'clock on it, so it's five. Yep, that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mary Jane Kittle, Hamford Street. I'm up here today so the residents may understand a little bit more in detail of what's going on in my belief. First, Amanda was not let go. She chose to leave. She stayed on. She was offered a contract position but wanted to be part-time. When she did not get the part-time, she quit on her own. No one let her go. That was of her own doing. Second, I would like to say that I'm opposed to items four and five in the agenda. Lately, the mayor seems to be placing herself in positions in a thirty she has no right to be placing herself on. One instance I'm referring to is a great reflect what's going on, the H.R. Committee, which a simple city web search showed that the past mayor could not serve on these committees, and only three council people are allowed. This was in July twenty-four, two thousand eighteen, which I have in hand if anyone would like to see it. With this, the mayor has approved, with this, the mayor knows this because she was on the council at the time that this was approved. This only leads me to believe that this was a disregard for our city's laws in showing that she believes she can do as she pleases. With this control and her knowledge from her career of H.R. Department, the largest company in the world, GM, she is well aware of the requirements to keep a smooth functioning system and has grossly failed in our beloved city. She and her friend, the past city administrator, have shamefully failed the city with no procedures in place for covering the departments in case of an emergency or resignations. Cross-training and succession orders for the finance director and the city administrator missing has caused the city to be in a hurt. Plus, to bring it to light, if something should happen to the mayor, it's well-known that she refuses to have any constructive sessions with the mayor pro tem and to keep her in the loop with anything. This has to stop. With the control she wants to promote a person, intern, city manager, who has no skills or degree to the job, taking him away from his department he excels in, then giving a large raise that he can take with him and go back to the position padding his pension. Then she wants to hire a man who left the city two times, failed to get grants for the fire department's update, which has caused the taxpayers to incur higher taxes, and the city's debt, which is close to a hundred million dollars, now incur more by having to get bonds. On top of all this, Mark works for the city of Taylor, head department Economic Development, that would be in direct competition for the same grants he would be writing for us, grants he would be writing for them. Words can't describe how you could ever accept this. His loyalty would be to his employer first, as it should be. This has to stop. They're allowing the control. We do not have to do anything else. We have a current employee on payroll that can handle the grants and internship as the city administrator with no extra cost, I believe. This person unfortunately is disliked greatly by the mayor, and she seems to not want to have justice to the city in accepting his qualifications and ability to do the job, saving the city money, and having someone who actually knows what they do. The man I'm speaking of is Ben Hughes of the DDA. He has written grants and has been a city administrator in several other cities before coming here. I ask that you finally do the city right. I ask that you stop spending money like it was a surplus and place Mr. Hughes in these positions while searches on for the finance director and city manager, saving the city well-needed funds for our debt. With this, I ask that you, with the bare minimum, table items four and five so this can be further discussed. Again, I have the papers in hand for the agenda for 2024-2018 if there's anyone to say this. Thank you for your time.
Pam Smith, Philomene. I find it very interesting that a resident would have the knowledge of what takes place between the mayor and pro tem. I would think that a lot of this information could possibly be more on the confidential side rather than the residents know. With Gail having an H.R. background, I find it very difficult to understand that things would be withheld from the council members, including the pro tem. Yes, pro tem, Mr. Barr, and there's a third one that's new. Well, Gary Schleck isn't new, but he's still struggling to catch up. But I just find it very, very difficult to sit here as a person that was on an executive role in my corporation. Succession doesn't happen at every single corporation. We're still catching up on that. Many, many businesses are caught in that draft, in that tornado where they're sucked in, and they're left high and dry. It happens. Is money a factor? Sometimes. Is knowledge a factor? A lot of times. Is, I won't say discrimination, but someone may not like your way of management, your style. Someone may not like what you lack in education, but that doesn't mean that succession planning isn't in the background. It just hasn't happened in the forefront yet. Yes, we had three people attend a conference. As a resident, I have no understanding of how that's going to help your role because it wasn't explained to us. Our treasurer has simply told us where he's going to use this knowledge, where it absolutely is necessary that he continues and becomes certified and recertifies year after year as these things expire. But it'd be wonderful if we knew what this training is going to do for you in your role. What happens behind closed doors with you guys happens. Do the residents have to know? Not necessarily. Do we have to like it? Yes or no? Doesn't matter. You guys make these decisions, but we voted you in for this, and if you have a problem, settle it behind closed doors. Don't talk amongst yourself, out amongst your friends, and your other residents. Keep it in closed doors and fix it. Plain and simple.
Charles Glover in Champagne. I am tired of coming to these meetings, and it's like high school. I'm tired of he said, she said, all this stuff. I'm here to come here to learn about the city. It's been a year since, almost a year since I've been off this council, and this brand-new council's been up here. It's... It's, please work together. Please communicate with one another. It's just frustrating that, again, that these meetings are recorded, and you never know that other cities might be watching. And like, wow, look at what this council's, how it is, and the residents are speaking about. I don't care about some, it's, you're here to do the business for the residents. I get that sometimes it's difficult. When I was on council, yeah, I voted no a lot of times. I wasn't the popular person. A lot of people didn't like how I dressed. But guess what? I wanted to make sure that the city kept moving. During the work session, you guys talked about the Xfinity, $300 a fee for until the end of the year. That's $30 for a week, free money, as you heard about spending and all that stuff. That's free money, as it was commented that they still come to the doors anyways. Get that free money anyways. And then, as it says, it's the second permit for this year. I was going to come up here and just, as mentioned, this week's last for the farmer's market. Please, what I love seeing is Steve, when he posts about how many people show up, I hope there's a triple amount of people for this last farmer's market. Please support your local businesses. The amount of times about new businesses, I saw on some social media group about a new business, and oh my goodness, how it is, it hasn't even opened yet. We need to be positive about our city, where it's so, it shows people's characters. The whole, we need someone to do our grants so that, for instance, the historical house can keep being improved, and look what they've done so far. We need a city administrator. We need a finance director. We need to keep moving the city forward. It's, but so that we can still keep doing all these events, like the Christmas parade. They do a fantastic job every single year. Can't wait to see it again this year. It's just, again, I am just, it's just frustrating now as, when I see from the other side, and then just seeing how it's going. But please, can we please move on? Come to a meeting, get the job done, stop pointing fingers, whether they vote yes or no, it's enough's enough. Like, I understand everyone has an opinion. That's okay. Respect everyone's opinion, whether you agree with it or not. But again, as I mentioned, we need someone to do our grants. We need a city administrator. We need, so that we can move the city forward, so that we can get to 100 years. But thank you to Mayor for all those proclamations. Even when I was in high school, they did the one book, one-school community. It was the Hunger Games book, but it's just, I just wish that we can move forward. And then, again, Mayor, please use the gavel. It's needed, just like other commission meetings, but please respect one another. Thank you.
Good evening. Len Perota, Marquise. I'm also the chairperson of the Historic Museum Commission. I wanted to give an update of things going on on the commission. If everyone's noticed, we finished our grant for the landscaping. Looks beautiful. I recommend everyone go by and look at it. Recently, we put up decorations for Halloween. It's been a long time since we've done that. And we have a lot of things moving forward with the commission, a plan of updating how we do things there, how we inventory, how we log everything. Just got a student commissioner at the last meeting. She's already proven to be valuable to us. We have a lot of work to do still, some unanswered questions still we're waiting on. I talked to the mayor last week about Wi-Fi for the museum. It's something we're still working on. Our next grant, now that we completed the CN grant, and we're looking forward to that. That'll replace windows, that'll replace, and change some things in there with the kitchen and everything. So we're looking forward to stuff. We have a lot going. I want to thank Mark for getting these grants to change this museum. If you go on YouTube and you watch the Michigan Ghost Hunter video at the Allen Park Historic House, and you look at what the house looked like compared to now, it's amazing, it's an amazing difference. And there's been a lot of people putting a lot of work into that place. So with all that being said, Laura already explained that we will be handing out candy and have free balloons. We're going to continue to do our job over there. We're going to continue to make this museum the best one downriver. And it's going to be a lot of work, but we could use the support. I know we have, you know, some of you have offered to help us, which would be great. There's still a lot of work to do, and we are working hard to make the city proud. With that being said, I want to go into something. I too am tired of some stuff. You know, we have a lot of volunteers in this city, a couple hundred maybe, that volunteer their time, and they do a lot of work for the city, whether it's beautification, festivities. I can't name them all because I probably can't remember all of them, but we do put in the time. And as the chair of the museum, I've organized the team there, the group of us. We all have a role. We all have a part. We still ask for help. There's people that are more knowledgeable in the city than us. I could go to Mike and ask Mike just about any historic question, and I'm sure he has it. I can ask Nancy. I can ask Dennis, Tim, every one of you. I can go to. Mayor, you too. And I think we need to do this together. But the thing I want to say is, as we're working hard to make the museum better, I ask you guys too. We're going to achieve a lot. We have a lot of talented people working in this city. There's a lot of people here that can make a difference, and I think we need to work together. Like Charles just said, we want to get to our 100-year. Every person up here, just like every volunteer in this city and every resident, has a talent, has an ability to do things. Let's merge it all. Let's put it all together. We, for years, I consider this the best city downriver and probably in Michigan. I've poured my heart out in this place. I've dedicated my life to this city. I've played football, basketball, baseball. I've been hurt. I ruined my knee and my college scholarship chances playing for the Jags. And here I am, nearly 50 years old, running the museum. Like, no, we go back a long time, but it, I just want to see unity. We all have a role to play, and we all can do good things together. Because if we don't, it's, we're just going to fail. And I don't want to see us fail. And I'll make sure to my last breath that we don't. If I need to help anybody, I'll help. If I ask for help, I appreciate people helping me. It's teamwork, and that's what I want to see. So thank you for the time. Everyone come by the museum, take a look, see what we've done over there. And we will have balloons and Halloween candy. And see everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to come up here to first.
Do you have your name?
Oh, sorry. Dominic Chonos. I don't currently reside in Allen Park, but I've spent most of my life here. I'm a student. And first, I wanted to come up here to say, to give you all a break from all the negativity tonight. And I just wanted to ask and talk about one thing, and that's music. A lot of my classmates know me around school as one of the kids who plays guitar or plays in bands and stuff like that. And it is a possibility that I would be playing at the Calavera Rose Day of the Dead event coming up. And being in this little community that we have in downriver Michigan, full of different bands and artists, it's very tough to find places to play. And there's a lot of businesses and a lot of restaurants and bars that would seem like they would be open to having live musicians and artists play. But unfortunately, that's not the case, and that's completely their decision. So I don't know if this question can be answered, but I just wanted to come up here and ask if it is legal, if like, we're just allowed to set up on the sidewalk and play. Because it's tough to make it anywhere when it comes to music, especially if you're someone my age, and if you play the music I play, I can, you can probably guess what I play just by how I look. But yeah, that's all I got.
If you would do me a favor, please, and fill out one of those contact sheets and leave it with Mr. Mize.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name's Renee Myrna, and I'm from Dearborn Heights. I'm not from Allen Park, and this is my first city council meeting. So I wanted to see what a city council meeting was like, and I heard yours were pretty good, so I came. And I was not disappointed. It was pretty good. Well, I just want to get, like, a different outsider perspective. So a couple, I took a couple of notes, and what I noticed was, a lot of young people here, but I heard that they're here only because they get credit in schools. Is that correct? However, however, in my opinion, that's how the bug gets in these kids. When somebody here is tagged for this board one day or this whatever council, and they're going to get the bug to be in your chair one day. And hopefully, they do, because we need young people to start stepping up and taking over and being interested in how government works. So, hey, bravo to you guys, even though you're here under coercion, you know? One of the things that I wanted to say to the, about the guy that was here previous about the music, people's perspective, and some of these people were presenting facts, and some of these people were presenting truth, is not negativity. And I appreciate the fact that when these people were presenting, I'm very aware of a room, and I noticed that you guys focused on whoever was speaking. You didn't get sidetracked. You didn't look around. You didn't roll your eyes. Well, maybe somebody did at one time, but I won't mention anybody's name. But it wasn't personal. It was respect for the people coming up and speaking, which I was really grateful for, because I pick up on feelings in the room, and I pick up on things like that. And when it gets distressing to sit and watch something when you know that there's this undercurrent of nastiness, which I didn't pick up here. One of the things that I wanted to say is, it's a short distance from awareness to action. And I noticed there was a few people that came up here and were very brave in saying some hard things, things that they found out, maybe that were operational things that were walking, doing behind the scenes that might not be, you know, copacetic or where they shouldn't happen, some rules that were being kind of bent or twisted or broken. And, you know, that took courage to come up. But I wanted to say it's a new day. It's a new day. People are aware now. And it's not just that they're aware, but they're aware and they're going to be called to action. What's done in the dark will be shown in the light, and it'll be shown in the light for everyone to see. So whatever's done in the dark is going to be shown up regardless, whether it was through good intention, oversight, doesn't matter, because that doesn't matter anymore. It's a new day. Rules are rules. There's a reason they're there. It's not one rule for me, another one for thee. So whatever has to happen in the background, whatever's going on, everybody needs to examine themselves and make sure they're toeing the line of the rules of the city. And that's what I got from these people here. They are begging people to follow the rules. Like, why is that even an issue? That shouldn't even be an issue. But the rules are there for a reason. So I ask that you guys keep an open mind, analyze yourself of where maybe you might be bending the rules a little bit, and actually contact these people. And if you have to offer an apology or whatever you have to do to straighten it out, straighten it out, these people are looking to you as their representatives. They want to be able to have a firm trust in you guys, that you are doing right by the citizens. You wouldn't be volunteering for here. I don't know if it's a paid position or what, because I'm totally ignorant of all this stuff, but you wouldn't be in this position if you didn't have a heart for it. But the problem is, sometimes when people get in a position, I know there's forces that push you here and there. But I just wanted to say I really enjoyed your council meeting, looking forward to sitting in on another one, and I know you guys are going to do right by the people, and the people are going to be behind you 100%.
Thank you.
If there's no one else coming up, we'll close public comments, move on to the consent agenda, which this evening consists of claims and accounts on the payroll report. Motion, please. Motion by Mr. Valerius. Second by Mr. Marcos. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, as approved. Resolution one is to approve the street closure request from the Parks and Recreation Department for the annual Lighted Christmas Parade on Park Avenue from Wick to Philamine, and to end at the community center, to be held on Friday, November 22, 2024, from 5:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Motion.
Motion, Mayor.
I have Mr. Schleck and Ms. Nick. Dual motions. Any comments or questions? I think we're all pretty familiar with that. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is approved. Resolution two is to approve Stephen Leslie on behalf of Comcast Cable Xfinity for door-to-door solicitation permit, request number two, 2024, with a $300 fee. The permit expires 12/31/24. Motion.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Support.
Support by Mr. Schleck. Comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
No.
One no we have from Mr. Marcos. Motion is approved. Thank you. Resolution three is to approve the Metro Act permit application submitted by Open Fiber Michigan LLC, and authorize mayor and clerk to sign any necessary documents with the understanding that the actual construction or installation requires additional approval. Motion.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marcos. Get to that. This is, I believe, a state-mandated application. It's pursuant to Sections Five and Six of the Metropolitan Extension Telecommunications Right-of-Way Oversight Act, as otherwise known as Metro Act, for access to ongoing usage of the As otherwise known as Metro Act, for access to ongoing usage of the public right-of-way, including public roadways, highways, streets, alleys, easements, and waterways in municipalities for a fiber system. The city council is asked to consider approving the Metro Act right-of-way fiber cable installation permit, and authorize mayor and clerk to execute same as outlined in the resolution and supporting documents. Um, does anyone have any questions on this?
To the chair?
Yes.
Just to clarify, because we, I believe we've come across this before. This is, we have very little say as far as like, what is actually getting put in here. This is just a requirement that they have to check, like?
Yes, but there are requirements, um, there are engineering. There are places where they cannot just place these installations anywhere. There are restrictions, which are fully detailed here, and, and this is going through virtually every community. But they, we do have restrictions. They cannot just come in and, and lay them wherever.
Right. But we, we just couldn't, if, if we didn't approve it, it's prob, almost certainly still going to happen. It's just, it's something that.
Right. But we do have control over where this goes in. Yeah, they have to do, they do have to meet certain requirements. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is approved. Resolution four is to appoint Tom Murray as the interim city administrator, according to the terms agreed to by mayor and city council. I will read them. Uh, may I have a motion, please?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Support.
Support by Mr. Schleck. The memo to, to council is as follows. While the city proceeds with the process of filling the city administrator position, there are major projects underway in addition to the day-to-day operations, which require immediate attention. The HR committee discussed options and spoke with personnel to determine the best individual to fill the gap. It was determined that Tom Murray, DPS director, is the best candidate to fill this position on an interim basis. We are requesting that council approve this appointment as outlined below. Hundred and twenty thousand dollars interim city administrator salary. Forty days cashed out of sick time at a cost of one fourteen thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifteen cents. If the city hires a full-time city administrator, Mr. Murray will return to his position as director of public services with a salary of a hundred and ten thousand. Retiree healthcare, the city will pay five percent for every year of service toward the monthly premium. He retains the city vehicle. The clothing allowance of seven hundred and fifty per year, which ceases if he is appointed as a permanent city administrator. And by the way, that gets paid annually and was already paid out, um, as, as a DPS director. A phone allowance of fifty dollars. A longevity remains the same. Uh, fifty dollars for every year of service paid out once a year. All other benefits as laid out in the administrative and appointee benefits plan. The exception being that life insurance remains at one and a half times salary up to a max of a hundred thousand, but will rise to a hundred and fifty thousand if appointed as permanent city administrator. Comments or questions?
I think it's a good decision. I think that Tom Murray is one of the smartest guys I know. Uh, he's very familiar with grants, and, uh, if you talk to him, it's like talking to an, you know, like, when you talk to an accountant, they have a different language. Engineer is a different language. Tom is a very up-to-date guy on, on all the things that are going on, and I think it's a great, a great move for the city.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is approved. Resolution five is to approve a professional services agreement with Mark Kibbe at a rate of ninety dollars per hour to provide services to the city of Allen Park for the management and administration of the Community Development Block Grant Program and other work as outlined in the agreement. Motion.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marcos. My cover memo indicates the following. As the city proceeds with the process of filling the city administrator position, there are a number of CDBG, state and federal grants in various stages of completion, which require immediate and ongoing attention, including the submission of reports and information required for compliance with regulations and requirements of the CDBG program. At this time, I am requesting that the council approve a professional services agreement with Mark Kibbe at a rate of ninety dollars per hour to assist the city with projects as outlined in the agenda resolution and the attachments. Due to the unique skill set required to obtain these grants and Mr. Kibbe's recognition as an expert in the field, the agreement covers work on existing grants, as well as work resulting from requests made by the city to apply for grants throughout the year. Comments or questions, please?
To the chair?
Yes.
I just, I think it's worth noting that, um, the, like, as, um, Len noted up here, the historical house looks great. A lot of that fund came from this, this block grant. A lot of the safety tile that we see around our community come from it. Um, Mark has been very successful for it, um, in doing that. Um, and during his entire time here, or a large juncture of that time, he was working as a contractor for other communities, Riverview, namely. So this is not an unusual agreement. Um, he fully can write a, a grant for Allen Park and a, a grant for another city, and those do not conflict with each other. So, um, I think that this is, um, a, a good decision for the city, because, um, quite honestly, I mean, since we've been, since I've been up here, um, for the last five years, we've gotten one of these grants almost every year. Um, and a, a, a lot, a lot of funds, um, for, uh, our taxpayers that have immensely improved the city, and hope, hope that we can continue that.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Just to add to that, I, I believe, I don't have the exact numbers, but I think over the course of Mark Kibbe's career, he's raised over, or earned grants totaling almost fourteen million dollars. I think almost six million of that for Allen Park alone. Uh, the rest coming from all the other communities that he wrote CDBG grants and other grants for. So, uh, the expert terminology in regards to what's in what you just read, Mayor, uh, is truth to that. He has the connections. He knows what he's doing, and it would be beneficial to the city to retain him to continue writing those grants or applying for those grants.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is approved. Resolution six, to approve the purchase of a Castas broadcast unit to upload videos and information to the city cable channel to replace the obsolete, non-functioning electronics unit at a cost of thirteen thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars with funds from account 10122898400CableIT. Motion.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Schleck, second by Mr. Valerius. Uh, comments or questions? We have a refresher on this. This is a system, we, uh, people who watch these, um, council meetings on cable TV have not seen them lately because the electronics, uh, electronics unit died. Uh, as I seem to recall, when we moved in here, it moved in from the old city hall, and I think we kind of duct taped it together then. So, uh, the company, as, uh, Ms. Zattle explained, the company no longer exists. We have, um, no way of replacing parts, and, um, it, uh, it's been buried. Uh, so we are replacing it with the new Casta system, which, as she also explained, has better technology and will, at some point, if we so desire, will enable us to livestream these, um, these council meetings. Um, so, any questions? I think I've explained as best I can. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is approved. Uh, we will now move to elected official comments, and we will start with Mr. Osterheimer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will keep this very short. Uh, first, uh, thank, uh, thanks to all of you that come up to the podium tonight and spoke. Uh, it's appreciated very much. Um, there's a lot to dig through there, but, um, it was important conversations to be had, and, uh, I thank you for approaching. Uh, and last, but certainly not least, I wish to offer my condolences to Clerk Mizzi, uh, for the, uh, recent loss of his father, Eddie. So God bless you, uh, Mike, and your family, and the rest of you, and good night.
Thank you, Phil. Michael?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Treasure. As everybody knows, a big day's coming up. I know you're sick of hearing it on the TV ads, the social media ads. I'm not a political ad. I'm the, I'm your election administrator. I don't care which way you vote, just, just vote. And there's so many ways to do it. November 5th, the polls are open. All our usual polls are going to be there. Um, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM sharp. If you walk in at 8:01, it's against the law. So you gotta get there between 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM. But if you can't, you can always get an absentee ballot. It's not too late. You can now, now apply online at this address. Matt, not that we're casting it on cable, but, and it has hurt us, but, um. Anyone who watches this on YouTube, or anyone here, anyone, especially you younger folks there, uh, Michigan.gov/vote, register to vote early. Um, if you can, absentee vote. You can't make it on Election Day. Don't worry, Michigan's laws have early voting, okay? This exact room right here will be turned into, uh, early voting precinct for nine days, starting on this Saturday, the 26th. And it is, you will present your ID, they'll get you a ballot, and you will go to a booth, fill it out, and you'll put it through a tabulator over here. So, gave you three options to vote, so don't tell me I didn't know or I couldn't vote, please. But, um, also, people ask, where's your ballot boxes? We do have one here at City Hall in the vestibule. It's open 24 hours, and it's got the police cameras. We also have a smaller one at the library. Um, it does have security, same thing. Um, we don't get many. Don't worry. I check it like four times a day, so don't be afraid to put the ballots in there. I'm not going to lie, I've done it at like 2:00, 3:00 AM, just because it kind of bothered me, so, um. Use the drop boxes. I will get them. And if you put it in there, and you wonder, did they get my ballot? Boom. Michigan.gov/vote. You could check. Give us at least like a few hours the next day to market received. Don't put it in there and think it's going to read it. That's just the metal box for the record. Um, next part, and my final thing here is, we're going to have them. The sought-after, "I voted" voting stickers done by Michigan students, okay? These are like gold. You can't have them. It, it's hard. A lot of people are coming in and asking for specific ones. It's hard when they come in a roll to do that. And on Election Day, it's going to be even harder for them to worry about going down six or seven, so enjoy the one you get. But, um, after election, I'll be selling my private collection. No, these are awesome. Every poll will have them. Um, and again, these are the ones designed by kids, high school and middle schoolers here in Michigan. So, you go lock these up now. Thank you all for coming out. Remember to vote. God bless you, and good night.
Thank you. Um, well, Mr. Barr missed, his turn to be first. And so we will go to Mr. Schleck.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I will try to make this short. I have a list. I'm not going to even lie about that. Uh, first, I want to say congratulations to the Quanis Club, uh, for their 85th anniversary. It was a pleasure to see those members show up, and especially to hear a little history of the Quanis Club. So that is definitely something I find very interesting, and I will try to make a meeting when, of course, we're not meeting. I want to give my condolences to Clerk Mizzi and his family. I deeply understand how it is to lose a family member. I also want to say, be safe on Halloween, and if you can, I recommend definitely checking out the Alex Pumpkin Patch. It's well worth coming. That I, this past week, had participated as a judge in the Allen Park Straightery Chili Cook-Off. This was the first annual. Uh, it was successful. I imagine they're going to do it again. And I was asked what categories and who won what. Well, the first category was, uh, best overall chili, and that went to the prestige. Uh, next one was spicy chili, and that was Buffy's Mexi Cuisine Grill, which is actually the straightery themselves, straightery themselves, I'm sorry. And finally, spiciest chili was the Meat Guy's Barbecue, which I believe they're in Dearborn Heights. Uh, the next thing is, uh, we had a recent business, uh, in the community. The Rat Pack received a second bit of excellence from the Better Business Bureau, and they also will be featured in our magazine in December. Also, the Beautification Commission is having a leaf cleanup on November the 2nd. They are looking for seniors that, uh, need assistance raking their leaves, so if you know any seniors that need help raking their leaves, please reach out to, uh, myself, because I'm the Beautification Commission's commission liaison, or the commission themselves, because all hands on deck to help any need seniors for leaves. It's a great effort. Uh, daylight savings time is on November 3rd, right afterwards, so beware of that. Turn your clocks back. I know it's always fun. Uh, or forward, I think, forward.
No, fallback.
Fallback, uh, yeah, that makes sense. Uh, Election Day is coming up, as the clerk mentioned. Vote the way you so choose. I'm not going to get into that, but definitely I believe get out and vote is important. Definitely do so. Uh, and then November 9th, the Presbyterian Church on Park is having their annual craft fair, so that's a good event. Definitely attend that if you can. Uh, next, before we meet again, is Veterans Day, uh, on 11/11. So again, it's a gay to honor all vets alive and those that passed. Opposed Memorial Day, that is owes to honor those who made the ultimate sacrifice. I want to wish, uh, a very happy birthday to my wife. That's going to be on tomorrow, October 23rd. And thank all the citizens I came up today. I appreciate it. I took extensive notes. And I also wanted to say that I, I look forward to working, uh, if he chooses to agree to the agreement with Mr. Murray. I think we're going to have a, a great start, or can restart. I don't know what way you want to necessarily put it, but I think it's a beginning, uh, that we're going to see some changes in our community that will be much needed. And with that long list, I will finally yield. Thank you.
You promised you'd be short.
Oh, I didn't promise this, I'm going to be short.
Thank you, Gary. Mr. Lloyd?
Um, so, uh, first off, I, I really want the, uh, the werewolf ripping off his shirt that says "I Voted", that's the one that I want. I'm eyeballing it. I was going to ask him for it, but that's, haha, alright, so there are some cool ones. "Ope, I voted" is also a good one. Um, uh, so, uh, I, I do, um, again, taking extensive notes during public comments, so important to us. Um, and I, and I can't respond to every single person. One, I want to, uh, start off by thanking, uh, Dom Chonos for coming up and, and giving us a respite to talk about music, and I am not a lawyer, but I am almost certain that that's illegal. Um, I don't, I don't think you can do that, but I think, you know, continuing, like, work together. Um, I, I know that that's hard, um, but that's, uh, you know, that's the grind. You know, making the music is the easy part. Um, it's the music business, though, alright, bud? Um, keep, keep thugging, um, thugging it out, and I'm, I'm sure you'll figure it out. I know, and we'll, we'll keep working on that. Um, one thing really stood out to me, uh, that, uh, Ms. Karate came up and said, and I, and I want to say this right out front, that I think that for everybody, we should not, definitely should not weaponize training by employees, elected officials, anybody, because I think that we, we can all recognize, we, we've sent, you know, we've sent our department heads around the country to national organizations where we've received rewards and, and networked with other people. Um, I know for a fact, um, when Mayor Pro Tem Nick, uh, Councilman Schleck, and Councilman Barr, they went up there. Not only, we, we talked about, we had breakfast shortly after, and we talked about, um, some of the numerous events that they, that they learned about, and we talked about those things that they brought back to us, but also networking, meeting other elected officials, sharing experiences. It's immensely valuable. It's immensely valuable, and it's something that is an easy thing, that it can escalate and turns into an arms race, pot shots. Clearly, FOIA requests are usually not, um, they don't come with a bouquet of roses, so I'm sure that that wasn't, uh, you know, the, the number one thing that Treasurer S. Timer wanted to, uh, receive. But a hundred percent necessary, especially being brand new into this job, it is absolutely important. So I, I just want to say that for the record, that for everybody, elected officials, employees, I would be, I would hate to see the next time that somebody wanted to go to a training, it come up and be turned into a political football, which it shouldn't be. Um, you know, whatever your profession, whatever your vocation is. Um, you know, whatever your profession, whatever your vocation is, um, you know, we're lifelong learners. We should always be striving to become better and, and to learn more from, than what we're at. Um, another thing that stood out about her comments that I, I think, um, was poignant to me is that, uh, it, it is one of those things that can deter people from, uh, wanting to, to do this job. And I, and I'm not gonna, I, I, I will tell you, like, I'm, my own experience up here in the last six months has made me not want, like, I'm not resigning, not doing that, but made me not wanna do it again. Um, and it's, um, when Mr. Bader got up, I was, I was blown away when he said that he came 10th out of 14. We had six names on the ballots for six positions. There was two writing candidates, which I'm not gonna point out who those were, okay? But, um, but we only had six names for six positions. And that's unfortunate. And I truly hope, okay, young people sitting in the office, fun fact, next election, 2023, you can run. You are all going to be age, you're making weird faces. You absolutely can. All, only requirement is, is that you live in the city of Allen Park. I don't actually know if there's even an age requirement. 18, all of you. John, I think you'd be a great councilperson, okay? So, this, I say all that, and I know we've been sitting here for a long time. This doesn't work unless people come up and do these jobs. It is absolutely important. And, and I, and I know that I have been striving, I really have been, we have been striving to work together as a council, okay? We have really been striving to, to go, like, and I, and, and I know that our riffs have been very public and open. But Gary, Nancy and I, we've had breakfast multiple times. We weren't able to do it this last weekend 'cause it was a busy weekend. We, uh, Councilman Schlack and I, we were talking on the phone, um, Sunday, an hour before we got here. I know it seems like we're not, i- i- if it, if it seems like we're not prepared, it's not the case at all. It's, it's the fact that we're trying to figure this stuff out together. And, and I was actually, I'm very encouraged by this meeting because we did so in a pretty amicable way. And I know that I have absolute faith in the people that are up here. I have absolute faith in the people that are up here to be able to do this job and to be able to get this done for the city of Allen Park. Um, but I would also ask, um, I would ask for some grace for the people that are up here doing the job. Um, just because it, it is a difficult job. If you have questions, there's nobody up here. There's nobody up here that if you have a question, you stay on the city council, uh, meeting, that they won't hang out afterwards and talk to you, okay? I, I mean, I, I was out here, um, on my birthday, when the sun was going down, talking to residents because they had questions about what was happening, okay? So, if you do, okay, we, I, I, I go out that front door and if you have a question for me, hang out. I would be happy to talk to you, okay? Alright, happy to talk to you. And, and that is, that is how, that is how democracy works. And so, I am just very, very appreciative of, um, my fellow elected officials up here and the sacrifices that they made and the challenges that they have overcome to, to serve their city. And I am incredibly grateful for our residents for coming up here and speaking to this council, bringing up their concerns. It's how it works. I appreciate you all very much. I, I echo the feelings, uh, of, um, of Mr. Perota, that, and I, I know everybody up here that, that we love this city and that we are looking to, um, make this a better place. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nick.
Um, so this time, two years ago, I lost my dad. So, Mike, I totally understand what you're going through. So, my prayers and thoughts are with you, um, during this difficult time. So, um, but I do have some shout-outs, um, that I wanna say. So, there's a couple of stories, so I might be a little long, Mayor, but, um, but I do have to thank the DPS on a couple of occasions in the police department. So, one success story is the, the residents on Hanford Street were going through a difficult time. There was a tree that needed to be cut down, there was a gas leak. Things were going back and forth. I got several calls. I immediately called, um, the DPS. I got immediate response, so I wanna thank Phil for that. I know, I think Tom was on vacation at that time, but his department stepped up. They got ahold of DPS. The tree is now cut down. Um, just the other day, I got a text saying that the gas leak has been fixed and the meters that were in your, their homes are now put on the street. So, that was a success story, I think. I know we've heard things about DPS and how they haven't gotten along with us and stuff, but I just wanna let you know, but there was a joint effort between our DPS and, um, the DTE. So, thank you for that. Also, too, I was up here, um, a couple, a week ago, um, I was up here at City Hall and I got a telephone call from a resident that lived in Prince's Estate. And they were panicking, that area, that whole street on Hamilton, because one of the houses of the resident was making this huge banging noise. I mean, it was horrible. They put it on speakerphone. I had no idea what it was. So, I went over to the police department, I gave him my phone, and Officer Wingers listening, and they're listening to it, and they're like, I think it's water. We're not sure. He immediately sent a squad car over to the home, the resident. They checked it out and it ended up being a wa- well, they didn't know at that time. So, but they knew that it wasn't a crisis, they didn't need to call our water department. The next morning, I text, um, Tom Murray, and he immediately sent Justin from the water department. So, thank you, Justin, for that. He immediately went out, checked the house. It ended up being a pipe in the basement. Well, the sub pump was what was making the noise. Uh, but there was a huge pipe in the basement. It was all sewer, the whole house smelled like sewer. Um, but it is all cleaned up now and the residents are happy because they did thought, think that that house was going to explode 'cause the, the noise was just unbelievably loud. So, I just wanna thank our departments, um, for the immediate action and taking care of those residents. And those residents have sent me messages saying thank you so much. So, thank you, uh, DPS and the police for taking care of those. Um, but we have a commissioner on the historic commission, and her name is, um, Jackie. And I know she's not gonna like this, but I'm gonna give her accolades for this. Um, her name is Jackie Legzarski. And, um, so I'm gonna read this to you, what I received. It says, "The Art in the Legislation Program is a partnership between the Michigan Legislature and the Michigan Association of State Universities. And they showcase students' art in the state's legislative buildings. The program aims to promote art in everyday life and to celebrate the creative talents of the Michigan Public University students." So, how the program works. The first thing is the selection. So, during the previous year, the program purchased art, artwork from the student, um, student artists at the Michigan's 15 public universities. Then they display them. A commit, a committee of legislators select a number of works to be displayed in the Anderson House of Office Building and the Binsfield Senate Building in Lansing, Michigan, for one whole year. Then there's a reception. A reception is held in the fall to honor the students and their work. Um, some say the program acknowledges the importance of art and creativity as essential aspects of a society. Others say the addition of student artwork has improved the aesthetics, quality of the legislative offices. So, our own Allen Park resident, Jackie Legzarski, her, a professor chose her artwork and it was submitted for a class assignment and entered into the program. It now sits in the display in the office house on bill, on the ninth floor of the House Office Building, right next to the Representative Liberati's office. So, I just wanna thank her for her artwork and give her kudos on that. She's a very humble person, so I know when she sees this, she's gonna say, why did you do that? But I just had to bring that attention to her. Um, let's see what else. Oh, I don't know if anybody watched the game on, on Sunday, but go Lions! So, that was a, started off being not so good, but it ended up being really good. They won by two points, so I just wanna say congratulations Lions and hope you can pull off on Sunday, too. Um, and that is all I have. Just everybody have a safe and scary Halloween. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hilarious.
Uh, again, I wanna start just offering my condolences to Clerk Mizzi on the passing of his father, as Ms. Nick mentioned with her father, um, coming up on two years in January when my father passed away. So, uh, my deepest condolences to you and your family. Uh, I also wanna offer congratulations to Kyle Carr, the Deputy Parks and Rec Director. He and Sadie Dandy, who works in City Hall here, uh, were married, uh, last Saturday. Uh, it's kinda special for me. Kyle was a former student of mine at Cabrini, uh, taught him and his brother. And although it makes me feel like a old man when students get married, I'm also very proud of him and, uh, wish him and Sadie the, all the best in married life. Uh, I wanna thank all the residents who came up here to talk. Uh, again, like, just taking notes in regards to your comments and everything else. We do listen to you and, uh, we do appreciate you coming up here. Uh, it's often a difficult thing to come up in front of, uh, us. Don't know why, but, uh, and offer, uh, you know, your thoughts and your opinions on different things. So, I just really appreciate, uh, US residents coming up and talking to us. And even non-resident, uh, you know, from Dearborn Heights who came up here and just offered, uh, you know, her insight into a meeting that she really has no bearing on her life or, uh, but her taking the time to come up here and spend time in a long meeting and offering her insight in regards to things is pretty, uh, pretty opening, if I could say so. Uh, I know, like, I talked, I, I mentioned it to Dan Lloyd, uh, 'cause we're both teachers. I told him I was kind of, uh, envious of his position, uh, not just here on council, but as an Allen Park teacher, to have all these students who are forced to come here, but come here nonetheless. Uh, I'm a teacher at Woodhaven High School, uh, trying to work out a way to force my kids to come here and do the same, but I appreciate all the young students that sat through this, uh, lengthy meeting and, uh, again, like Mr. Lloyd said, uh, you're the future. I mean, you may shake your head now, but, uh, I was doing the same thing when I thought about running the prior election four years to 2019 and decided not to. And then 2019 came up and I decided to run and was fortunate enough to be elected. Uh, it could be any of you, just like it could be any of us, uh, to, to, to take this position and, uh, truly do what you feel is necessary for the good of the city. Uh, also, piggybacking on some other things, uh, you know, I, I, I heard all the comments about, uh, you know, the, what's going on up here and within here. And, you know, I, I'll, I'll share with you, you know, and I've reached out to all members of council. Uh, I've openly apologized to my fellow members of council if, at any time, I disrespected them. Uh, again, you know, I, I've, I've taught English and speech for over 21 years, uh, and communication is, is huge, uh, for me. You know, it, it involves so much more than just talking the talk, but being a good listener is definitely something that's essential for successful dialogue and communication. So, uh, I pledge, you know, to work harder, uh, to promote unity in this council. Uh, and I'm always open to communication and offering that open ear to listen. Another thing, just talking about the training, uh, and everything like that, you know, I never thought it would have to be justifiable, uh, to talk about receiving training and education as a teacher. And Dan knows, you know, we go through professional development sessions that are just so mind-opening and useful, uh, constantly. Every half-day when students get released, we're usually there in a professional development meeting, just educating our teaching minds. Uh, so that education and just the, the benefits of, uh, everything involved in it, uh, is crucial. Uh, you know, we're, as, as a teacher, you know, I, I teach students, I educate students, but I'm a lifelong learner myself. I don't claim to know everything, and I'm constantly, uh, learning and educating myself each and every day, including my time up here, uh, on city council. Uh, with that, like I said, I just wanna thank everyone. I wanna extend thanks to Tom Murray, uh, for taking on this interim, uh, city administrator role. Uh, I'm sure you're gonna be doing a great job and, uh, you have our support with that. And Mayor, with that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Markles.
Last, finally. Ah, um, everybody's talking, you know, you guys, the young guys, this is extra, they get extra credit, don't they?
Some of them, yeah.
Okay. Who's forced? Who's forced? He forced? Uh, Tom? And you? Okay, you get extra credit. Okay, I was, you, I was you when I was your.
I need the extra credit.
Okay, so, yeah.
Musician.
Yeah. Guitarist, so, yeah. So, um, yeah, you could be here, okay? 'Cause I never thought I'd be here, for sure. Um, I, I, I wanted to bring attention, and we talked about the, talked about the training and then Tim made a, you know, a nice presentation. Um, Tim has taken on a tremendous, a tremendous amount of, uh, work. And every training that he goes and gets, gets into is an investment for the city. He has worked very hard, he's taken on so much extra work. So, him ex- him explaining about the training is, is good. Of course, it's need to be, uh, to be transparent, but he has taken on so much and we need to all thank him for how much he's done to help out the city. So, again, thanks, Tim. Um, what was I gonna bring? I didn't know I had a whole list. Oh, it's Halloween next Thursday. Not this Thursday, next Thursday. Um, everybody be careful with the kids, the lights, uh, your house lights, uh, your cars, and the children on the streets, they pop out of nowhere. I'm telling you, they pop out of nowhere. I don't know where they come from sometimes. I had, I, I'm the slowest guy out of the driveway on earth. Um, and I got, there's cameras everywhere. So, uh, everybody be careful on Halloween and don't forget to get all the, uh, all the events going on uh, this week and next week with the city. Um, oh, uh, and I wanted to thank the office staff as well. Uh, they could be all the grills that are taking on extra work and working extra hard and it's, it's greatly appreciated, it really is. Um, I think Tom will be, be great in the transition. I have a lot of respect for him. I, I still don't understand him. Um, he's just way over my head. So, I'm sure he's a good for the job. Um, that's about it, all I've got. Um, another of my, my usual nonsense is, uh, today is Smart is, Smart is Cool Day. It's National Nut Day, and it's Make a Dog's Day.
Hey!
It's like kids, they have a day, every day is a kid's day and every day is a dog's day. So, anyhow, I wanna thank everybody for coming. I wanna thank all the comments, uh, from the citizens. Uh, we listen to everything, believe we do. Um, and, you know, we've tried to work as a team as often as possible. Uh, we, we hash things out. So, thank you all for coming. Happy Halloween, good night.
Thank you. Um, I've, uh, had my conversations with Mike Mizzi about his dad. He knows how I feel on that. Uh, I think, I'm gonna repeat what a lot of people said. I wanna give kudos to all of our department heads and supervisors, um, who, who have worked really hard to keep, uh, our city running. Um, perfect example of teamwork, people pitching in, stepping up. Um, I think, as Tim also mentioned, uh, special thanks to Jackie Baxter. Uh, we are still in the midst of an audit. We're in the midst of, uh, a bond sale. In fact, I've got two meetings tomorrow regarding bond sales. And, uh, they are, been looking, both the audit and, and the, and the bond people have been looking for all kinds of information, which wasn't, uh, easily available. Um, Tim pitched in, I was sitting at somebody else's office looking at their computer, trying to figure out what I could find. Three computers, thanks. Um, I would also mention that, um, personnel reached out to, to both Amanda and Mark, who were, were very forthcoming and, and trying to help us. Um, they still love the city and they, they didn't wanna see anyone, anybody fail. And, uh, but again, Jackie, uh, just, uh, dynamite. Um, I think, uh, there's not too much more to be said. I, I asked for your information because, as Dan pointed out, it probably is illegal to do what you ask, but, um, there are, there have been events where I have seen, um, individuals come. And, uh, do a little more talking and see what we might come up with. I know, I think, uh, Mr. Lloyd was involved in, in, uh, some band groups getting together. And, uh, maybe that's something that we look into, um, maybe a special event. So, um, as long as I can read your, your writing or maybe come back up here when we're adjourned so I can, so I can make sure, because, uh, even with the reading, sometimes I don't get it all, but, um... Very interesting comments from, uh, from individuals. I took a lot of notes and quite frankly, uh, some of the issues that came up are, are longstanding items that need to be addressed and looked at. They've just been kinda latent for a while. Some things need to be updated and I do appreciate some of these things being brought to our attention. So, again, very productive. Appreciate, um, the dialogue that we had here today and the, and the interaction. And, um, I think, uh, we have taken a big step forward. And, um, as Mayor, I'm, again, very appreciative to get more things off my plate, Gary. So, thank you for that. Um, but I, I think, uh, we can start to make some progress here. Again, very much appreciated. Everyone have a safe Halloween, as Dan was pointing out. Please, if you're having to drive, drive slowly and pay attention because, um, you don't wanna hit, you don't wanna hit anyone. Um, with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion. Motion.
Motion by Mr. Valerius, second by Mr. Marcos, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at seven fifty, thank you very much.